You're grabbing a boat?
I can't even touch it out when I have kids.
That's in your family.
I think we start.
Watch something online.
I started.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Didn't your mom drive it?
Yeah, she did.
Well.
Before we get started, if you'll rise, Councilman Masterson is going to say an opening prayer for us.
Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here this evening, and we pray, Father, that we stay focused on your work. We thank you, Lord, for the positions that we've been put into, and we just ask, Father, for your guidance and the decisions that we make tonight and from here forward. We ask for you to bless everyone that's here today, Father God, and we just thank you for the opportunity to be here. We ask you, Lord, to continue with your grace and your mercy, and thank you so much, Father, for the love you have for each and every one of us. All these things, Father, we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, your son and our risen Savior, and all of God's people, said.
Amen.
Please continue to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, the December eighth, two thousand twenty-five, Marshall County Council come to order. The BZA needs the room tonight at seven o'clock, so we may have to recess the meeting, just to let you all know that, but we'll try to get through that as quickly as we can and be thorough with the items on our agenda. Is there any public input on what we will be talking about tonight? You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Seeing none, Chair moves on to the attorney report. Marcel, you got anything for us?
There are a couple of things. The Judge in Elkhart County denied Mr. McFadden's motion dismissed for sewer board issue that's going on up there with the commissioners. The ban of funds need to be appropriated today so that we can purchase that from Star Bank in fulfillment of our commitment to IDAM. And that's about where things stand right now.
Any questions from Marcel?
I do. What, when is the trial? A hearing date for the McFadden case, is that the twenty?
No trial. The, there's a summary judgment deadline on Friday.
On Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Regional Sewer District Discussion. There is going to be a meeting on the eleventh. I know you all want to know about that. It's a non-quorum meeting, meaning we won't be assembling as a body, but the Sewer District has requested some private conversations. We're going to listen to them. We may have to meet later on to discuss any proposals, so we may have to have a special meeting, but per the Sewer District, we're going to just have some discussions, and that'll be, I believe, Councilmember Cox and myself. Okay, and one commissioner for a non-quorum meeting. We'll do our best to get everything done right for the people, so. Okay, plus the whole council and the commissioners have to weigh in on this publicly as well, so. That's all I have on that discussion. Any other discussion? Well, we're ahead of the game right now. Highway Subcommittee, do you guys have anything for the Subcommittee Report?
Yes, we did meet, and we went over some budgeted numbers that he was projecting. What was really interesting is we talked about how many trucks would need to be on the road for bad weather, and zip, it hit, and he says that at some point, there's up to twenty-seven trucks that are on the road in bad weather, which I thought was a great amount of trucks on the road. And he also talked about purchasing additional vehicles with what we have now and some spares. And then another thing that I thought was really interesting was the, the numbers that are coming in from the violetics as far as in the past where we had the Pazer ratings on the roads, and we've been getting really good reports on that, but he was showing us how you can put the violetic machine onto the vehicles, and it could rate the roads as you're driving down the roads, and it was quite interesting. I thought it was very interesting. Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the violetics, but it has a color-coded map there, shows where what has been scanned, I guess is being scanned and, and recorded for them for making decisions, everyday decisions from that, so.
And you could take that machine and put it on, any, you could take it off of that vehicle and put it on another one and drive the roads, and it's really more, I think it's more accurate than the way they did it in the past, but I thought it was a good meeting.
Yes.
Angie was there also.
Any other comments, discussion? Budget Finance Committee, Nicole, myself, and Deb are on the Finance Committee. We met with Steve Dalton. A lot of discussion was about the Senate Bill One. It was a very different bill that would shake some things up. That's to be seen. It doesn't go into effect twenty-twenty-seven. Perhaps twenty-twenty-eight, the new rates that could be adjusted, up or down for income tax and so forth, would take effect. But it's still in a work in progress, and so how government is going to be funded in the future is still up in the air. I'm sure government's going to get their share, let's, let's put it that way, but we were talking about opioid restricted uses. As Mr. Dalton said, it's been used for Narcan, EMS equipment, training, turnout gear. Question for Stan, I know, would like to know about the enforcement for drug prevention, drug court perhaps, some coping drugs, all that sort of stuff. I think Steve will look into that. Did, did we talk to him about looking into that, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, but I guess that's still remained to be seen whether enforcement can be used with it, but it probably can.
Yes, he said unrestricted. He's seen all across the board uses of the unrestricted funds, and he said the big thing is, is you just have to file an annual report at the end of the year telling them what the funds were for, though he's seen all sorts of uses in other counties with unrestricted. Restricted is a different story.
Okay.
Can we use that for J-CAP? Or restricted or unrestricted?
I don't know what you can do as far as restricted. We need to figure out how.
There is, online, there is a whole laundry list of things that you can use restricted for.
Okay, so we need to research that.
He also wants to make financial projections looking forward, and that's something we would probably be interested in seeing. I know Jesse would like to do something as well, so. With, oh, shoot, a couple important funds, general funds at eight million five hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. The jail lit is a shade under five million as of the end of the month of November. Finances look good. I guess there's no other committee reports, and we're ahead of schedule by twenty minutes. I thought I saw Sandy and Mike here. You're ready for the six o'clock presentation? That's nice.
We're always ready.
You're always early. Yeah, yeah, you're early.
Thank you for my mic. So, I'm Sandy Garrison. I'm Director of the Marshall County Museum, and with me is Mike Miley, President of the Marshall County Historical Society. And we are here for the museum's quarterly report. Wanted to tell you that fall seemed to really pass in the blink of an eye. We were looking at the numbers when we were getting ready to come in and talk with you, though, and we realized that was partly why it felt that way. Last time we saw you, we were had, coming up, right, I think, on five thousand visitors, and as of November thirtieth, we were close to seven thousand visitors, so we've been really busy. And in addition to that, our volunteers have logged more than four thousand hours, furthering the efforts of our staff, so it's been a good three and almost four quarters at the Museum and Historical Society. So in addition to working with the public, one of our goals in twenty-twenty-five was to create more original publications. So your packet contains one of those tonight, and you might remember, we shared a county history with you earlier this year. The authors' names will probably look familiar to you, but we've added Bill Snyder this time. I remember Mr. Snyder from school and probably many folks from Plymouth do as well, and so it was a lot of fun working with them on this presentation.
You have to add him.
I know. Yeah, he's like, he's so much fun. Oh, my gosh.
He was there.
Oh, yeah. The cool thing is, he was actually involved in so many of the digs, and so we got some really interesting photos from him, and one thing that I learned was actually the largest leg bone from a mastodon ever found in the state of Indiana was found right here in Marshall County by the Triway Theater. So next time you drive there, you can just picture the herd of mastodons roaming around in that. Coming up, we have a memoir about growing up a hundred years ago in Bremen and a booklet on local train depots, so I'll keep you posted on all of those as things develop. And I think I've got my first picture for you. I did ask Sue to change the order, but when she sent it originally, she hadn't yet, so now they're in the well, if, let's start with the in-service, because I rearranged thinking I was working with the herd photo packet, but I think I saw the, I, I just wasn't sure that she had seen my request to switch them around, so we'll just, we'll have to wing it a little bit. So one of my favorite events for that quarter was actually our annual staff in service. And it literally took us through the history of the Culver community and the academies, and we were going through because we went both by bus, on foot, and golf cart, so we really covered a lot of ground that day. We were hosted by John Houghton, who's President of the Culver Historical and Antiquarian Society, as well as Jeff, as, as well as Jeff Kenny, who is the Academy's historian, and it was just a fascinating day. And actually getting out into the county like that really enhances the depth that we can offer to visitors when we tell stories, and there's nothing like seeing someplace a person to give it more power when you're talking about it.
I'd like to add, when we went down to Culver, cross-country, we didn't go seventeen and Culver, and we looked at a lot of cemeteries that are mentioned in the McDonald book, a lot of communities that were there at one time, Indian villages and things like that that you've read about maybe, and so where they actually relocated in the county, so it was really, really a worthwhile trip, I think.
Yeah, seeing the homes around the lake was really interesting, too, like the Vonnegut House, you know, and I'm trying to think of the name of the place where Ben-Hur, part of Ben-Hur was written, the, yeah, and so it just, it just was fascinating, and seeing the academy itself was really interesting as well. Then, Tori, I'm sorry, I'm making you go all over the place, so I think we need to back up then one. So another memorable event for us this quarter was hosting the American Revolution Experience, this traveling exhibit that was part of our work in conjunction with America Two Fifty. I know I talked about this with you before, but if you recall, this was a national exhibit, and we were very excited to be chosen as one of the host states. Visitors said they really resonated with revolutionary era events because they were told through the lies of ordinary people, you know, we're used to thinking of folks that we all know, but it was really interesting to be able to experience what it was like just for the common person, and, you know, to realize that people really didn't agree, it wasn't a consensus at all, and so it was just, it was, it was very interesting while it was there. And, and I wanted to give Mike a shout-out. We discovered actually an oversight when we got the contract for the exhibit as it regarded its insurance that was provided by the national organizers. So Mike was actually able to call this to their attention, and they worked out a fix for it, and it, so that not only helped us actually be able to host it, but it will benefit other organizations as the exhibit continues to make its way around the country, and then heads back to DC, and if, if you didn't get a chance to see it when it was there, then there are links on the America Two Fifty website where you can visit the exhibit online. So last week I was catching up with the commissioners on some of all of this and sharing some of our plans for twenty-twenty-six. And for example, our plans always include the refresh of one of our permanent exhibits. You might remember again from past visits to see you guys that we've been working on our dairy room, so that'll help us do a deep dive into that part of our ag history. But coming up next year, we're going to do a refresh of our sports room, and so the story I want to share with you this evening is sort of loosely related to sports, although it's not something that is done in the schools. But the story actually comes from Daniel McDonald's history of Marshall County, and it details the then only known prize fight to have been held in Marshall County during that era. So the action takes place in April of eighteen ninety-one. I have another picture for you. I don't have a picture from the day of, but you know, just to get you in the mood there. So McDonald says, "That afternoon, some of the local boys were told about the upcoming event, and the favored few who were let into the secret were on tiptoe of expectation, and preparation was made to pull out quietly by livery teams about nine PM. The secret had to be kept from Sheriff Gerald. It was not easy to get there. The night was dark, and the corduroy road was more than ordinarily rough. Some of the drivers lost their way, others ran into chuck holes, breaking springs and single trees. But when there's a prize at the end, the goal is always found to be reachable. The ring was in a large barn in the lumberyard near the Erie and Western Railroad, short distance northeast of Tiner, and there were no lights to indicate that there was anything unusual going on, so those who were not familiar with the lay of the land had to feel their way in the dark." One more picture. The Lake Erie train from the north arrived at eleven PM, bringing the pugilists and about a hundred and fifty fans from Chicago, Michigan City, and points all along the way. These spectators, who had paid an admission fee of five dollars, were seated about the ring as conveniently as circumstances would permit, and the remainder were stowed away in the hayloft. Now, you have to keep in mind that five dollars in eighteen ninety-one is the equivalent of a hundred and eighty-five dollars a day, and we looked it up and found that the average salary for a working person at that point was six hundred and fifty dollars a year. So it was not cheap to be coming to this event. An interesting aside, too, about this picture is I was told that the gentleman in the foreground there, by coincidence, is actually the stepson of Sheriff Gerald, who we will be talking about more as we finish our story. So the gladiators took their places, and the barn doors were locked. The doorkeeper was ordered not to admit anyone under any pretext whatsoever. Time was called, and the pugilist pounders came smilingly to the scratch. I mean, what a great sentence. They knocked away at each other with all the strength they possessed. The first round was a success, and applause greeted the bruisers as they retired to their corners to be rubbed down. But when not many people know a secret, it's hard to keep. It was getting late, but Sheriff Gerald was informed of what was going on. He and his deputies drove rapidly towards the seat of war and asked the doorkeeper to be admitted. The distinguished dweller in the tents of iniquity informed them that under no circumstance could they be admitted. Whereupon the sheriff jerked the latch off, opened the door, and the deputies rushed in. Then ensued a scene of consternation which no pen can describe. There was a general stampede for the door. Lights went out, and for a few minutes, it seemed as if pandemonium had turned loose. Both the principals escaped and got out of the building with only their fighting suits on. The spectators, well, they were panic-stricken, and if anything, were worse frightened than the fighters. It was every fellow for himself, and devil take the hindmost. As soon as they got out of the building, they took to the woods as fast as their legs would carry them. But, oh, there were those in the hayloft. Most of them were the Marshall County fellows, and all were captured without effort. They had to climb up on a ladder which had then been removed once the fighting began, and so they were basically prisoners. They scrambled back as far as they could and covered themselves with hay, but that did not last long as they began to feel themselves starting to smother. The ladder was put up, and you would have just died laughing to see capitalists, merchants, businessmen, old men, young men, oliveheads, gray beards, married men, single men, all backing down that ladder, covered with hayseed all over their hats, all over their clothes. As they reached the floor, one of them remarked, "What in blank would my wife say if she could see me in this fix?" But they were greatly relieved when Sheriff Gerald informed them that he had no use for them, and they could go about their business. However, four had been arrested, all of them out of, out of town, all were out of towners, and each of them was fined fifty dollars, which was promptly paid, and thus ended the only prize fight ever witnessed in Marshall County. I wanted to actually bring, this is an actual copy of the McDonald book, so I thought you guys might get a kick out of seeing it just because we talk about it so often. This is volume two of the nineteen oh eight edition. It's actually in its third printing. And it, it's so fun to read. Believe it or not, this is actually edited down. It's much lengthier, you know, there was a lot of veracity, I think, at, at that point of time, but the writing is just so descriptive, and it just makes you feel like you were right back there. It did make me curious, though, about prize fighting, and so I did a little research on that, and it was largely still illegal at this point in history because it was associated with gambling and public disorder, and it, it was basically bare-knuckle brawling. And during the eighteen sixties, though, things were starting to transition. Something was adopted called the Queensberry Rules, which introduced gloves for the first time, timed rounds, and the ten count, so things were starting to transition, I think, to what we know as boxing. So I thank you for your attention as always, and for your support of the museum, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Sandy, we send our condolences on the loss of your mother, Chris Cossey.
Thank you.
Great lady.
Thank you so much. Yeah, she was a wonderful mom. Very much missed. Thank you. Very kind.
We went to the library during the American exhibit and had a blast, and my kids were entertained all day, so. They're looking at old stuff, and we have that, we have that and another one sitting at home, too. We'll go through it every once in a while, but it's, it's really cool how a lot of the stuff is still there, and if you know roughly where stuff is, you can figure out where the rest was. I, I really like it. It's very thorough.
Good, thank you. It's a little treasure, I'm telling you. If you've got time, come and browse around, boy.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, and have a happy holidays if we don't meet again before then.
Likewise.
Fix the sound system.
Fix it. Yeah.
You ever sit out there? I'm old. I don't hear very well.
You hear that, Stan? We got to fix the sound system. Yeah. More things change, we want to stay the same. Okay, moving on, we have to approve the sheriff's contract, but Sheriff, did you have a report or anything from Sheriff's Department? You're on the agenda.
What I'm really here for is to ask for the council's support in the purchase of the APX N seventy Motorola handheld radio that we presented to the commissioners at their last meeting. This is not the hundred percent fix-all, but it's about as close as you're going to get for communications within this county. This is the same portable the state police use. They've had them for about a year and a half. I've spoke to several of the officers, state officers that work Marshall County, and they say they've never lost a, a call. How do they do that? The radio can automatically see cellphone internet. So it never loses communication unless the cellphone tower goes down. It still can go over the air, can do the radio, eight-hundred megahertz system. But that's really a unique feature, because right now we have in our portables what's called Smart Connect. Smart Connect can see your wireless and use it if it's not password-protected. And if we, if we know what your password is, we can program the radio so it will use your internet. Now, we've went through the school systems, and we've programmed our radios with their internet so that we will never lose communication. One of the biggest weaknesses of the eight-hundred, and the Indiana Public Safety Commission will tell you this, because Because this is what they said when they put that system in is it's not going to give you a hundred percent for handheld radios. I didn't give you a hundred percent for mobile radios either, but they 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 said that from the start. So this is, I'm asking for your support for us to pursue these radios. I have an additional request going through next month with your with you. But we have an opportunity to save about fifteen thousand dollars. They have a special going on right now. And the total price is. A hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Any reviews and stuff?
As far as communicating with the other like Plymouth and Bremen and Bourbon, will they? Is it compatible?
Oh, yeah.
The other, okay.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Eric, how many radios is that?
Those departments.
What?
With those departments, with like the city police department.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's all eight hundred megahertz. It's just they've got the system now that you can do it over the internet.
Okay.
In fact, people listen to our conversations by going on the internet, listening to the eight hundred radio over the over the internet.
How many radios were those? Or what is this?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one radios, yes.
Sheriff, you you tried going through, uh, getting a grant for this and it didn't go through? Was that a grant that got cut or?
We wrote a grant through Homeland Security for the radios originally. And we just didn't get it. And then we worked with Stan, uh, trying to get some of the ARC money, uh, American Rescue. But that according to the the person governing that said that that didn't qualify. It's supposed to be economic development, recovery development was what you're supposed to use that money for. So we tried multiple angles because of how expensive it is. But now we're coming before the the council to help fund those. And we'll probably do the same thing with the in-car cameras that we presented to the commissioners. We're not ready to come to you yet. We've we're going to look for other avenues and funding. That's a little less expensive because you do it by years. But you have to remember, you have to sign a commissioners will have to sign a five-year deal with with those cameras. And it comes out to a little less than forty thousand a year for those cameras. And those will just go into the cars that we use for patrol. We'll use the other cameras that we have for like transporting inmates like we do now. We have other cameras that we could do that with. Yes.
So there's a discount if you buy it, well, by, is it year-end or what is that?
Year-end.
And that that fifteen thousand that comes off now, there's not another one coming out that's better than this one that's going to be offered January one, is there?
I hope not.
You know what I'm saying?
You 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 know, technology as well as I know, it's like.
I know salesmanship.
No, these are been out about two years, I'm going to say, and they're the best they got out there now.
So your point of contact people are aware of this then from the council here?
Point of contact for?
For the sheriff's department.
Who is the point of contact for that?
I know, we talked a little bit.
Uh, he's looking for support tonight so he can go ahead and purchase it. I see that it's been rounded up to hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Is there other questions for Matt before we?
Do we know what fund this would come out of?
It's going out of the general fund, it looks like.
Oh, there it is.
Could you give us any examples of how that would affect maybe safety or making the job better?
When you're inside.
Community safer?
When you're inside a building like this building or you're sitting at my desk in my building where the dispatch is. Eight hundred megahertz can't get through block and steel. You go to a school, it's horrible. In fact, you asked me are these compatible? Plymouth just bought those same radios for their resource officers. Because again, in the building, they don't work. But they can connect to the internet now and that will make them maintain connectivity with our dispatch.
We've had a situation like they've had across America in schools. And they tried to contact, it would be very difficult to communicate back and forth. Is that right?
We've had situations where two officers went to a domestic. And you know, we go to a domestic, first thing we do is take them into separate rooms, have two officers there, separate them, separate rooms. Well, one officer was in the basement with one other people. The other officer was upstairs with the other people. Person in the basement became physical with the officer and he called on his handheld radio and the guy up, the officer upstairs could not hear it.
Just a question. A connect, the connectivity of the internet is everything on this one, correct?
That's what makes this special, to be able to connect to the cellphone internet. Which is if your cellphone is getting an internet, is getting a cellphone reception, you're also getting internet reception through your cellphone. Through that same tower.
I was wondering if there's any areas where that would actually be blacked out. I don't know, I'm an novice.
I know when when I worked in alternative school, we had something similar to that because as soon as you got within a mile range, you couldn't. We did something similar to where it pinged off the internet or I think it was satellite or something and you could respond back. Because if you're a mile or two away. I think like what you're talking about, your eight hundred megahertz would should hit. But if you're in a block building where it can't go through, it'll bounce through the the internet service.
But remember, we use FirstNet.
Yeah.
And FirstNet is the state's emergency operating cellphone connectivity. So in fact, FirstNet has their stuff on our tower out there at the at the jail. So we will have clear internet connections there.
Is there a safety feature on there then? So the bad guy wouldn't know where the policeman is?
Uh, safety is is maintaining contact with dispatch so that you can get assistance if something that goes wrong is the the safety issue.
But but my question would be is if there's a couple of people, bad guys that are out there, is there any way that they would know where that signal is coming from? I don't know. Do you know?
Like hack them, like we're.
Hacking into it. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just wondering because with other things, you know, sometimes we have issues with internet. But if this is what you're wanting, I'm sure you've done your research on it, so.
Well, like I say, this is just like your cellphone. If you carry your cellphone and you got a cellphone signal, you got an internet signal. That's what they see.
But you see, my question was, if you were tracking me, you would know where I am every minute. If there was a complaint, I'm wondering if that could work in reverse. Maybe that's not a valid question, but I'm just.
No, because the way we track you is through the phone company with a with a search mark. Nobody can just jump on and see who's where with their phone.
Unless you give them permission.
Do I?
Unless you give them permission to do that. I mean, I can tell my wife, I can give my wife.
Yeah.
To track me.
You have other questions for Matt? He's looking for a show of support. Is there a motion to approve this in spirit for next month? And the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Then make your motion. I'll second that.
motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Compton. Is there discussion further? Chair sees done. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need to approve this contract now?
We do, but. It's before you. It's a standard boilerplate. I'm pretty sure that was the similar contract to years prior. Commissioners, you've approved this, haven't you, Stan, already or not?
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the sheriff's contract as presented?
No move.
Also by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees done. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Back to the agenda. Brent and Linda, fifteen minutes early. Just state your names real quick for the record.
Certainly.
Brent Martin, one five four one three twelfth road.
Jack Davis, fourteen zero eight three Lawrence Lake Drive.
Wendy Yoder, nine oh one South Michigan Street.
What you got for us?
Sure. So first I want to start with a letter from the mayor. Robert Listemberger from the city of Plymouth, he was unable to attend tonight due to the city council meeting. But he sent this letter to you. Over the last year, we have had three separate instances where families in our community suddenly required relocation for housing. Each time I reached out with urgency, starting with United Way. And each time they quickly organized alongside several volunteers and stepped forward. They opened their hearts, gave them their time and provided immediate relief. We can count on them. They have proven that on three different occasions. Modern volunteers are asking for help. They cannot do this alone. What they need now is the financial support to ensure that when the next crisis comes, and it's not a matter of if, but when, we are ready. Safe housing funding provides that readiness. This response team is geared toward multifamily dwellings, rundown apartments, outdated hotels and neglected properties that are no longer safe or sustainable. When these places close, it is not for one or two individuals who are being displaced. This program is for multiple families during one big event. That scale of need requires more than emergency goodwill. It requires a coordinated plan and resources. As I and many others have pondered for years, what can a community truly do when families suddenly find themselves in this crisis? This plan provides a place for tonight's stability through, for tonight, stability through the first month and possibly into the second month. That is what we can do. And from the very beginning, it will be clear with those we are helping that this support is designed for that immediate timeframe to give them breathing room and dignity in the midst of a crisis. Will we continue to help individuals beyond that? In certain situations, yes, but safe housing ensures that families know they will not be left alone. And volunteers know they have the resources to respond. The Safe Housing Response Team is not just about shelter. It's about dignity, opportunity and resilience. It is about ensuring that when the next multifamily displacement occurs, and it will, that we have more than goodwill, we have a plan. I urge you to contribute to this funding and thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Robert Listemberger, Mayor, City of Plymouth. And I can leave a copy of that letter for you. So appreciate your taking the time to talk to us about this this evening. As Robert mentioned, I'm here on behalf of the Marshall County Safe Housing Response Team. And we're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars to help keep residents safe and and stably housed following the issuers issuance of vacate orders due to unsafe living conditions. This team first formed in July of twenty twenty-four when the mayor called about the eighteen residents that were at risk of being homeless due to unsafe conditions at the point, requiring the city to issue a vacate over order. Over the next fifteen months, two additional incidents occurred impacting a total of eighty-nine residents. And based on current assessments and reports from municipal and community partners. We know that other properties in the county are also at risk, meaning additional households may face similar emergencies in the months ahead. These crises did not arise overnight. The causes trace back many years and tonight we will briefly discuss the factors that contribute to unstable, unsafe and unstable housing in Marshall County. As well as the collaborative solutions being put in place by local government nonprofits, our faith-based partners to be prepared for future events. Well, some of those factors, I guess first of all, I want to make sure we recognize our steering committee. Robert Listemberger is on that committee, Brandon Shattuck. We appreciate his participation. Sister Connie Bach with the Poor Handmaids, Amanda Beck from New Son Church. Jack Davis with her Faith-Based Communities Coalition. Michaela DeBois from United Way, Barb Holcomb and Tom Kev from Link to Hope. Brent Martin from S R K M Architecture and they're joining me. Members of these, this committee, I think most importantly, bring expertise in housing, case management, emergency response and community leadership. You can see on the slide, some of the drivers that we're talking about, local housing shortages, limited availability availability of safe, affordable rentals and homes. Unstable income and low wages and barriers to renting that include traditional renting that include high upfront costs. Poor credit, prior evictions or felony convictions. All of those can provide, present barriers. Motels and substandard dwellings or apartments are often becoming the default low-income housing in our rural communities across the country, frankly. Due to easy entry, there's no lease requirements. Extended stay motels often fall through the cracks on code enforcement. And then the deferred or neglected maintenance leads to hazardous conditions. So the structural housing shortages across Marshall County. We first got on the radar with the Indiana Health Department in twenty nineteen through this Marshall County stellar designation. And they gave us funding to do a housing matters gap analysis. And in that report, some key findings, just a few key findings were that there are over sixteen hundred units, thirteen hundred, sorry, units that are still needed to meet projected demand. A high number of our folks in Marshall County, age fifty plus are aging in place, which results in a high consumption of housing stock likely for the next twenty years. And those ages thirty to fifty are in prime home buying years, but interest rates and the high cost of construction are barriers creating high pressure on rental housing. Interest rates likely to remain high have pushed average age of first-time home ownership upward ever since the pandemic. Climbing just from thirty-eight, age thirty-eight in twenty twenty-four to age forty in twenty twenty-five. Yeah.
National thing too.
It is, very much.
So those, the good news for Marshall County is that those up to age thirty represent a significant portion of the population as well, about a third. And that's unusual for rural communities. So it's good news from the job market standpoint, but it also puts pressure on rental units. Because that's typically the age where you see most people renting. So some other things that came out of that study is Marshall County's housing stock is aging and increasingly increasingly unsuitable. Marshall County relies heavily on older multifamily buildings for affordable rental housing. Housing costs have risen faster than wages for many Marshall County residents, increasing pressure on low and moderate income housing. And the county lacks adequate housing options for vulnerable populations, including seniors, low-income renters and households in transition. So the Alice report, this is something that United Way has been doing for over twenty, sorry, over ten years. And we've been participating in Indiana. And we know that eleven percent of our population in Marshall County is living in poverty. But there's another twenty-eight percent that are called Alice, asset limited, income constrained, employed. Just means they're working hard, but they're still having a hard time making ends meet. And we know from this report that we've talked about it for years, is that housing and childcare are two of the main factors that people are struggling with. So the chart shows a breakdown from across Marshall County townships too. So you get a sense, it's not just one area. It's spread out across the county. And one thing that I think is is notable is that fifty-six percent of our Marshall County Alice renters are cost burden, which means they're paying more than thirty percent of their income on rent. And then if you look at behind the numbers a little bit more, seventy-one percent of our single female-headed households with children are in that Alice category. That's seventy-one percent. And fifty-one percent of our senior citizens, sixty-five and over, are also part of that Alice group. Those are pretty high numbers. So I'm going to turn it over to Brent.
Okay, that's fine. And you know, I could read this slide, which you all see, but I want to talk for a second about point in time count. And I don't know how familiar you are with that, but the point in time count, every January, you count people who are housing vulnerable and or homeless. I've done that for the last four or five years. I've done it at the now vacated Red Rock. I've done it at the economy inn. At Trinity, when they have a free dinner. And I can tell you that. It's very easy to put the blame on those individuals that are living in those situations. But if you do the point in time count and you meet them as I have done, you very quickly learn, most of them are employed. Many of them have had serious health issues, which in this country creates bankruptcies. Many of them were raised themselves in unhealthy conditions. And to a certain extent, many of them have either addiction issues and mental health issues, partly as a result of where they're living. The barriers to housing include all the things that Linda has mentioned, their poor credit, pastive. They're poor credit, past evictions, savings, past felonies. I interviewed a lady, elderly lady in a wheelchair. She had a felony conviction 35 years ago. And she can't get anywhere else except the motel. That's just the way it is. So a lot of those residents need help. Particularly in this case, what we're here tonight to talk about is in crisis situations. You know, I don't need to repeat everything that's been in the news media about the point or the Red Rock. Or quite frankly, I can think of a couple of other places that are on the cusp, if you might say so. And just to give you a little bit of a sense of how those motels become long-term. They were never designed to be what they are. You know, they were a Holiday Inn and a Hotel Six. That's what they were. They deteriorated, they weren't taken care of, they became pay-by-the-weak places. And it's easy to get in because there's no lease, there's no utility deposit, all those things that cost a lot of money to get you into a typical apartment. And quite frankly, the tenants are totally unprotected by the living, the landlord that owns the building. They're stuck, if you will, and it's not inexpensive. Usually between $800 and $900 a month. That's not.
And increasing.
And going up, yeah, particularly going up now because guess what? Red Rock's vacant. That's how that situation doesn't get fixed. And you know, frankly, we've had weak regulation and enforcement for a long time. I think everybody in this room knows those places were bad places. And I'll give the city administration a lot of credit for getting in there and making some things happen in the last few months. Because that's not easy either. It's just very difficult. So fortunately, some of that's going on now. But it means groups like Safe Housing need to work with those residents when this crisis happens. And it's not inexpensive to find that housing, at least in a temporary basis. And I can tell you that folks like Sister Connie who's here, Barb Holcomb, Jack, Linda. I'm more of like one of those guys that's sort of looking out on the horizon, what's that long-term thing? But these people are right in the thick of it. And they've had three difficult situations and I can't say enough good about what they've been able to accomplish. And quite frankly, I don't know if there's anything left in Link to Hope's account or not, but I know it's tough right now. Those are the issues and the owner neglect, the poor conditions in those buildings. If you had been to the city council meeting when they confirmed the order to vacate Red Rock and saw Dennis Manuel's presentation of slides of the conditions in that building, it just about made you gag. It was terrible. So that had to be done, had to be done. You know, and the residents in many cases, I want to say this on the last note there. They are, they're not skilled people who know what their rights are or know what tenant rights are. They're not really even tenants because it's a pay-by-the-weak thing. And they're afraid to complain. Because if they complain and it gets to the right person, guess what? Hi, get out of here. We're going to put that next guy in. So that's, that's just how it works. Last thing I want to mention is just in terms of where people fall demographically. Typical four-person family. If you're considered very low income, which is 30% of the median income in this county, that's an annual income, gross income of $27,600. That's not exactly the same as the poverty level, but it's kind of right in that ballpark. And 21%, 21% of the people who are renters in this county are very low income, at that 30% or below level.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Yeah. So the next slide we want to.
You have a question?
Brent, I know you work various counties. Is this kind of a statewide problem that you see even working in Casasco?
It is. If anything, the housing deficit in Casasco is greater.
Greater there.
Greater there, yes.
And they have the higher income.
There is a higher, yeah, their demographic is higher than it is in Marshall. Stark is a little lower than Marshall.
Right.
But all across the area where we work, which is basically the northern third of Indiana.
Right.
I hear the same thing in Wabash. I hear the same thing in Rochester. You know, it's just pervasive, pervasive. And well, and I know of buildings in other counties that are also on the cusp of having the hammer cracked down on them. And people are going to have to find someplace else to live when there is hardly any place to live.
Well, and coupled with that, Brent, when you have the rental properties, it's not the 1% rule anymore. The 2% rule is kicking in as far as the real estate taxes are concerned. And I'm not trying to defend the landlords. I am a landlord, but I do not rent anything I would not reside in. Okay? But not all landlords are that way. But with the cost of maintaining everything and the cost, the higher cost of taxes for those of us that are landlords, you're paying the 2% rule versus the one that doesn't leave a lot. And you know, when you see rentals, I mean, you're lucky to find a rental in Plymouth, Indiana for $1,000.
Right. The market on a two-bedroom apartment that is nice is going to be 1,300, 1,400, $1,500.
And another 100 or 150 if you want a garage.
Yeah. Right. And the, that's more than you're paying for a fleabag motel room. But that's for, that's for a decent apartment, you know, Centennial Village, you know, the ones that are just now finishing on Water Street, rents for 17. And there's a waiting list. It's not done being built and there's a waiting list. That tells you something.
That always amazes me when you're looking at that and those rental fees are going out of that. You know, there are mortgage loans out there with 3% and 5% down for the people that have decent credit or zero down for some, and there are some grants that are in there. And those people are paying more money for rent than what their PITI would be on purchasing a house. It's just unbelievable.
And at the same time that we're hearing there's a, the number of bankruptcies are increasing and we're also learning that credit, credit card debt is increasing. I mean, there's all sorts of factors going on here that are just making it a tough situation for a lot of folks.
I'm sorry, but I think bankruptcies are way too easy to stand against. That's my opinion.
So has any of the cities committed to funds toward this? Like the mayor, I would think the city of Plymouth is.
So the administration, I think it's fair to say is committed. It'll have, we started with Marshall County. This month will be going to the city of Plymouth to match.
Your ask be of Plymouth.
The same.
Same.
The same. And then we, I intend to take that springboard, if we get favorable recommendations, to every other town to participate at some level. That'll be less than the level that the county.
I would think that the demographics of this issue is primarily within the cities in Marshall County.
You know, the interesting part in the last 15 months, same time period, there, I did a quick Google search and there were three instances where there were similar issues. And one was in Culver and one was in Argus. And in two cases, the attorney general was involved. And some of those may have been resolved by the owner, which is great. But that won't necessarily be the case everywhere. But it again kind of points to a prevalence, right? And that's, yeah. And some of the issues that we've talked about, it's not just, you know, all of a sudden we're cracking down. I mean, we had, in one instance, there was an emergency response team that was at the Red Rock and almost fell through the railing on the upper floor as they were responding to that incident. So it's a safety issue, it's a livability issue for those that are living there. But it also is a safety issue, a real concern for our emergency responders as well.
And you don't have.
Annual budget then set up for this or?
We're going to get to that. But I will say this about the county as opposed to towns and cities. You don't really have apartment buildings in the county.
Right.
So it's onesie twosies. And a lot of people from the county, when they are in trouble financially, they're going to the cities and towns where they can hopefully find cheap housing.
Yeah.
So their county residents, the population of Plymouth has gone up, I think, about 12% in the last five years. Marshall County is completely flat. It's interesting.
But is that a true number?
Yeah.
When people answer the census, I'm sure there are people that did not put down that.
I mean, I could put in the census, the sun is going to come up tomorrow. I understand. People answer things.
And to feed off of what Greg just said, okay. If you're looking at these numbers here, you're looking at about 90 people, 80, 89 to 90 people right here. So the budget that you have set up or the projected budget, you're asking for 25,000 from us. You're going to probably ask the same for Plymouth. But as all of that money is accumulated and is put into the fund, what, what's the method of division of that and putting what party into what houses and what's the priority?
Yeah. So what, what we plan to do is set up at, we've already started a grants committee that will make those determinations. Is it a qualified event? You know, we would expect that the way this process will work is that we'll get an alert from the city or town giving us a heads up that something's, you know, maybe going to occur. That's ideal. Sometimes we don't have that luxury. But if we get noticed, then we can quickly convene community partners and we would run that past the grants committee first, you know, give us a thumbs up, yes or no, is this a qualified event? Enough families, you know, what's the extent that we think it's going to take? Is it going to take several weeks to relocate everybody? So we would rely on that grants committee. And what we would hope is that we've got an appointment from you and from every city in town. In addition to our representative from the community foundation on United Way, just so that we're connected and can, you know, best deploy resources on our end to help support as well. So.
No, I definitely want to give this due diligence. I am concerned we're going to run out of time.
Yeah.
Okay. However, I'm going to get to the brass tacks. The money would be sent to the United Way and the Grants Committee sets up protocols for this. And if someone had an immediate need within a week or two, how does that work?
Yeah. So what we would do is we're, yeah, 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 yeah. So it would, the case management goes through Link to Hope and the Poor Handmaids of Jesus Christ. And we've got case managers that are actually working with the residents. So the money comes into United Way, we get, we get an alert that this is happening. Grants Committee gives a thumbs up. And then we turn to those partners and say, are you available? Are you ready? What do you need? And then we issue the checks to them and they're the ones that are deploying. And when they pay out, they're not paying out to individuals, they're paying out to hotels, they're paying out, you know, for food or whatever it might be. But they're also partnering with Neighborhood Center and, you know, with Bread of Life and all available resources. It's kind of like the rule of thumb with emergency management is you use available resources first and then use these funds to fill in the gaps.
Random question. Do you have a way to refill your pot or recoup some of that money? It's like if you spend half a million dollars with a hotel collapse thing, then you reclaim any of that from the owners or insurance? Or like, I think on my house insurance, that if renewed, I have like, my house burned down, I could get paid for 60 days reimbursed or, you know, something like that. So if you guys would spend out what you have, is there a way that you could try to reclaim any of that?
We've attempted that, yeah, as well. And I think that again is an opportunity to work with our local units of government. They have a little bit more sway on that than we might. So I know the mayors had conversations with some of the owners involved in these incidents to see if there could be some reimbursement for some of the costs that were incurred because of the neglect, right?
Also, Amber Cox has a question.
I was just curious, of the funds that are coming in, how much are we going to actually fund the project and what are the administration costs going to be?
So we are not charging any admin fee on this. This is part of what we do as United Way. So we're not, we're not charging any fee with that.
Does any other member have a question for folks here?
I have one comment is I, I'm, I'm supportive of your request. But I also believe that like the city of Plymouth has about a quarter of the population of Marshall County. And I think their number should be quite a bit bigger than the other cities and probably larger than the Marshall County contribution as well. That's just a comment I have.
I'd be happy to forward that message.
I want to cut your presentation short, but I want to weigh in on this. I did speak with the mayor, full disclosure, he actually alerted me to this. And I looked at the opioid non-restricted. Is there any parameters on that, Madam Auditor, on the opioid non-restricted?
Restricted can be used for anything, but that is reported just the same as the restricted. So I need to know what the uses are for that. This would also have to go before the commissioners as well.
And, and I would suggest if the council supports their request, that's where the money would come from. Opioid non-restricted is not tax dollars. It's money that came through a settlement. You know, basically government said to these drug companies, you, you cause some community strife and because of it, you're going to pay up. And they settled, see a Marcel. And, and that's where I would think the money could come from. We have 62,000, $61,673 in the opioid non-restricted right now. I think all the communities, and I would suggest that's where, if you're going to pitch it to Plymouth, this is, this is money that came in through a settlement. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
And this would be a great way to reach across the governments for us to work together too. I mean, I would like to see Bremen, Plymouth and all of us come together to see what all coordinated as a government. You know?
When our cities are strong, it's everybody's strong. And, and they, they, talking to Linda this past week, they've had a call from Bremen to somebody who is homeless. And they brought, where did they go? They bring him here. And, and so I think it's a worthy cause. I've been to their meetings. I know what these people have been working on. And Sister Connie, what the amount that the, the Poor Handmaidings have taken care of. And it is better for nonprofits to, they care for better than government. But they have shouldered quite the load here in the past 15 months. And I think it's a good thing for the community to help in. So with that, I'd like to make a motion of support for the $25,000 that they're requesting for the Housing Response Fund. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Compton to support the request of $25,000. I would like to add to the discussion that it would come out of the opioid non-restricted. Again, it's not the tax dollars, it's a settlement for honestly, stuff like this. Any other thoughts or discussion?
My thoughts were, I was thinking 10,000 out of opioid restricted.
Okay. Other discussion?
I'd like to see how some of the other cities are going to come in before we.
Take them out?
Take, well, I mean, that, or we could add to it if we chose to. I want, I'd like to see how this, how the other cities would, where they would chip in, how much they're looking at.
This would be where I'd like to get somebody from every form of government together so we could talk about it and what to do. I agree with what.
That everything leans away.
Any other discussion on the motion? We do have a motion that we have to act on. To reiterate the motion, we have a show of support of $25,000 coming out of the opioid non-restricted for the initiative presented. Those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll be back before we'll approval.
Okay.
This, my thoughts too is if, if you guys, when you talk to other forms of government, I mean, I would be interested in how we could coordinate, work with them too. If you want to present that, that should be a great opportunity for us to work with all the different municipalities. I think it is a county-wide problem.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say when I was out with the mayor and we were interviewing some of the folks out there. And one couple in particular, I remember they were from Argus and, you know, limited options, right? So they ended up in Economy and, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. It's hard to hear too.
So look, yeah.
Notice if I'm right here, I can hear myself. If I'm back here.
Moving on to additional appropriations, we got a lot of transfers in this. So I want to try to get through this diligently, but quickly. Let's take the two separately, the general fund for prosecutors requesting $550.89 for law books. This is an additional, additional. Is there a motion on the additional?
So moved.
Second. Second. Motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Shattuck. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is no surprise. Three point four million dollars coming out of the general fund to pay off the anticipation note for the regional sewer district. It's a little bit greater than what the liability is right now. Councilmember Cox and I met with our attorney Marcel before we met. He recommended highly that we make good on our promise by approving this. It's in our petition to item and it's conditional on us buying the ban. Right now, the sewer district has about two million dollars. They've got some claims coming in. Having said that, it looks like the remaining balance will be or the cost of the county will be one point five million dollars. I mean, it's something we've been talking about. It's not what we're, we like, but it is what it is. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the appropriation as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shattuck. Is there further discussion?
Oh. Are we at the point where we should be doing this yet?
It was highly recommended by Mr. Lebent to do that. There is another control in place. The commissioners, if there's no agreement, that's deemed worthy, the commissioners can deny the claim. So that would be the other control in place.
So why are we taking a vote now? Why don't we wait till we it's settled?
Well, I think this further...
Is this, is this just a public statement we're making or?
So the sewer district, you know, filed an appeal. Are you aware of that too? And this is strengthening, you know, the argument that the order by item would be upheld. And so if you have a commitment by a body to take care of the debt, then I think the item appeal becomes much weaker for the sewer district. So that's the recommend, recommended advice by the attorney.
Attorney Ceresi as well.
And, and, okay, Attorney Ceresi apparently weighed in on this as well, right? Okay. Is there any other discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Six to one. We'll be going to statewide nine-one-one. There's an additional out of that fund for group, group health insurance of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Johnson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Supplemental probation, additional of thirteen thousand dollars for wages probation officer. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Second by Mrs. Cox, second by, I'm sorry, motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll do these en masse. We have three additionals in the amount of fifty-five thousand for stop-loss premium, fifty thousand for sharks, hundred and forty-five thousand for oxyate weekly coming out of the medical benefit self-insurance fund totaling two hundred and fifty thousand. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr...
Masterson.
Masterson. In gray hairs, Masterson. Second by Mrs. Cox or, yep. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Historical Society has two requests for two thousand two hundred dollars. Wages clerical two thousand, for social security two thousand, again, coming out of the historical, historical society fund. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Shattuck. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to transfers, there's a lot of them. We'll take these en masse by department. Auditor has two transfers, one in the amount of two hundred, one in the amount of five hundred. First one is in wages professional services to wager overtime two hundred, repair and furniture and equipment, two wages overtime five hundred. Is there a motion to approve both?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson. Is there, is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sheriff would like a transfer from wages patrol officer to wages overtime in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Who is the motion? Motion by Greg, second by Brandon. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three coming out of the, actually four coming out of the prosecutor. Toxicology of eight thousand, transfers to wages deputy prosecutor. Wages legal secretary, six thousand dollar transfer into wages deputy prosecutor. Office rent, a thousand dollar transfer into wages deputy prosecutor. Seven hundred dollar transfer from equipment maintenance contract to office supplies. Is there a motion on all four?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Transfer carries. Motion carries. Veteran service officer has three transfers, office equipment to wages overtime in the amount of three hundred. Other capital outlays into wages overtime three hundred and fifty. Travel and mileage, three hundred and fifty dollars into wages overtime. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. County Council General Fund, other projects into legal services of five thousand, professional services of five thousand, legal services. Also five thousand to your request there. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. BZA professional services of two hundred and twenty-five dollars into wages per DM. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. Shattuck. Those in favor of, is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Land Commission has two, wages department head, five thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six into office furniture and fixtures, wages department head of one thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents into office equipment. Is there a motion?
Summit. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, I guess, and second...
No, and Masterson.
No, no, Masterson.
Years.
Voices sound so much...
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Mrs. Cox, right?
Yes.
Masterson and Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Are those both same sign? Motion carries. We're gonna take all seven or eight of these en masse. General Fund Superior Court transfer, Superior Court two, transfers of wages clerical into pauper council in the amount of two thousand dollars. Uniforms clothing, five hundred dollar transfer into pauper council. Two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollar transfer from insurance liability into pauper council. One thousand dollar transfer from travel mileage into pauper council. One hundred dollar transfer from printing and advertisement into pauper council. Two thousand dollar transfer from Grand and Pettit jurors into pauper council. One thousand dollar transfer from office and furnitures and fixtures into pauper council. Nine hundred ninety-nine dollar and seventy cent transfer from office equipment into court-appointed doctors. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion?
I just wanna say something really quick. I just wanna say thank you to Judge because originally this was an additional appropriation and I think Councilman Shattuck said, hey, can we dig in and is there any transfers and they made it happen. So just thank you.
So they used their budget wisely and transferred money instead of asking for more. And pauper council for those watching or listening is the, what is it, legal, legal counsel for, yeah, public defender. Is there further discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. General Court Superior, General Fund Superior Court three, office furniture transfer of a thousand dollars into travel and mileage. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Shattuck. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Four transfers from the lid special purpose in the amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars, office equipment to radio and accessories. Four thousand nine hundred dollars from computer equipment into radio and accessories. Four thousand nine hundred dollars into computer software into radios and accessories. Four thousand nine hundred dollars from jail equipment into radio accessories. Is there a motion on the four transfers?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motions to transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Community Corrections has two, four thousand six hundred dollars from professional services into monitoring fees for adults. Five hundred dollar transfer from telephone into monitoring fees for adults. Is there a motion to transfer those two amounts?
Some move.
Motion by somebody. I missed it. My, my Brandon. Second by Mrs. Johnson.
Yep.
Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Statewide nine-one-one transfer of fifteen thousand from wages turnkey dispatcher into wages overtime. Is there a motion?
Summit. Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Supplemental adult probation, twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars from wages department head into wages probation officer. Six thousand dollar transfer from wages clerical into wages probation officer. Is there a motion?
Root.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Compton, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Two hundred dollar transfer from the prosecutor pre-trout aversion fund from other current expenses into office supplies in the amount of three hundred dollars again. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there further discussion? Mrs. Johnson.
We need to change the voices.
And we gotta get it done before the BZA. Those who do, the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Transfer carries. Oh, boy. Oh, well, solid waste will be an easy one. I think. I can't read that. Electric vehicle fund, LE or EECBG, of two hundred and seventy-five dollar transfer from supplies charging station at a contractual fleet charger. Five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar transfer from vehicle purchase into contract fleet charger. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. Pat, Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Community crossings transfer fifteen thousand ninety-one dollars seventy-six cents from the ninth road Pioneer County line into sixteen C Redwood and Pear. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Work IV life and death fund, micro filming, what goodness, something?
It's forty.
Forty, yeah, yeah. Those Roman numerals, I tell you. I say IV. You say, you say tomato, I say tomato.
Correct.
Micro filming, transfer from five, five thousand dollars into office furniture and fixtures. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Solid waste is the last one. There's fifteen transfers. Let's read them. Office and warehouse, two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars into director. Office and warehouse, one thousand forty-eight dollars seventy-eight cents into education coordinator. Appliances and electronics, six hundred and thirteen dollar transfer into education coordinator. Three hundred and fifty dollar transfer from appliances and electronics into tires. Four hundred and sixty-six dollar and thirteen cent transfer from appliances and electronics into household hazardous waste. Hundred and sixty-five dollars from fuel and travel into household hazardous waste. Ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, fuel and travel into advertising. One thousand seven hundred dollars from fuel and travel into payroll liabilities. One thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighteen cents from education supplies into payroll liabilities. Six hundred and twenty dollar accounting and legal transfer into payroll liabilities. Two thousand three dollars forty-seven cents from an education training into communication. One thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollar transfer from printing and outreach into communications. Eight hundred and sixty-eight dollar and sixty-three cents from utilities into communications. Four thousand dollar transfer from bookkeeper into warehouse assistant. One thousand dollar transfer from longevity overtime into warehouse assistant. Two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars transfer from personal liabilities into hazardous materials specialist. One hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cent, eighty-nine cent transfer from building and grounds into software and security. One thousand four hundred and sixteen dollar and ten cent transfer from universal waste into equipment. One thousand sixty-eight dollars and thirty-two cent transfer from universal waste into tires. Nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cent transfer from utilities to tires. Four hundred and eighty-one dollar and fifty-two cent transfer from depot repair into tires. One hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cent transfer from building and grounds into commodity recycling. And can I get a round of applause?
Summit.
Second. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson to approve all those transfers as read. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Salary ordinance amending. Let's see this real quick. I asked to split the stipend that the president of the county council receives with the vice president because the vice president does work beyond her reasonable amount of duties already and I reduce, I, I basically am taking a cut and she's taking that part of the cut.
You're here.
I have a round of applause.
I remembered your name.
We also have a probation officer status of non-exempt, forty-two dollars seventy-six cents. You can see it in the salary ordinance change. There's also longevity factors below. Is there a motion to accept the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three as presented?
Some move. Second.
I do have discussion though. I would have thought it would have been fair if we did gave a separate line item instead of cutting the president in half. So just, just saying that.
I have no idea what you're talking about, but hey.
Instead of you splitting it in half, I think we could have appropriated a vice president stipend for that. I would have been fine with that. Maybe looking for...
Statute, statute does not allow that. Statutory that only one gets it. And they can put between the two, but we couldn't have set up two separate lines.
Gotcha.
There you go. Smarty pants. Okay, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
We already did that. We already did that. That's right.
Yeah, well, you got me off track and we...
Second on that.
Is there a second? You, you made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Johnson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Down here.
Is there discussion on the motion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-sixteen. This is going to go into the dental benefits fund. It's just a transfer from the employee benefits rainy day fund and the amount of, is that six, sixty thousand dollars? It's a transfer, nothing additional. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Summit.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Shattuck. Is there discussion on the motion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Levin Law invoice in the amount of three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. As presented, is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of approving the invoice as presented will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public. We have the room reserved for BZA soon, but by all means, come up and say something if you'd like to say something. Chair sees none. Thank you for all attending.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to everyone. If we don't meet again, is there a motion to adjourn?
Summit. Still moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Masterson, second by Mrs. Johnson, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned.